Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 20, 2012, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Bennerat.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have a meeting agenda. We need to modify the agenda slightly. If you would turn with me to Roman 7E, we need to move that down below. Manager comments and go into a closed session for the discussion for a couple of questions that are being raised by one of our colleagues. So...
Will we do that before the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority? And then we'll come back to do that?
We will do that. We will go into closed session, and then we'll come back to correspondence petitions, mayor council comments, manager comments, similar adjournments, and then we'll go to HRA.
Kate, would you like a motion on the agenda?
I would.
So move.
Second.
Moving second that we approve the agenda in its modified form. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is the adoption of the consent agenda. There are a number of items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? I would like to remove 4C, the themed surf feature for the Edina Aquatic Center.
4L, Mayor.
L?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of C and L? All right. Moving second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Then quickly to C.
This is yours.
I don't see Director Caprio here. I guess he would have been the one that would have been best able to answer my question.
He's here.
There he comes. You're on deck. I pulled item 4C, which is the recommended themed surf feature for the Edina Aquatic Center, and recognizing what it's sort of backstopping with the FlowRider amenity, I was just a little curious as to why we chose a pirate theme for a surf mode for the FlowRider. So hopefully you can answer that question for me.
Yes. The reason that was chosen, and that was chosen several months ago, is to be in keeping and match what's the rest of what's themed out there. You know, the cable ride that we have on what used to be our, one of our diving boards is in the theming shape of a pirate ship. So we've carried that theme along to this as well.
Okay. Good. That's helpful. Any other questions? All right. I'll move that matter.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of adopting 4C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Then we're on to 4L.
Yes, Mayor. I'm just looking to Assistant Manager to discuss the revised changes to the purchasing policy.
Assistant Manager Kurt. Thank you.
Member Sprague, council members.
This policy was developed by the Energy and Environment Commission, and we also had a committee of employee-staff members who worked on the policy, made recommendations to the EEC. The EEC adopted pretty much the changes that were recommended by staff, and then that's what's before you tonight. And Member Bennett also noted some edits that needed to be made, so we did leave a revised version on the dais, but those were pretty minor in nature.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you for that report, and with that, I will move the item.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. That takes us to the Special Recognitions and Presentations section of the agenda. We have nothing pertinent there this evening. And then on to community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and inquire or comment to the council regarding a matter that is not on the agenda this evening? Yes, welcome.
My name is Shirley B. Rat. I live at 4913 Peyton Court. And we have been trying very hard to get a bicycle path from 66 to 70th Street. We have 32 children on that stretch of road, and they need a safe way to get to the parks on either side of Highway 100. One of the ladies that I talked who said she would love the bicycle pedestrian path, but she would like to see little speed bumps so that when you went over, you'd kind of be alerted to that. And everyone that I talked to with the, and even our new person who's moving in, was in agreement with this. And we want a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Today, I went out and measured the street, six feet for parking, seven feet on the west side, and 12 feet for cars.
And this was on what street, Shirley?
This is on Peyton, or on 70th, between 66th and 70th, on the service road.
Oh, you mean on Normandale Road?
The front of the road.
Okay.
So anyway, if you just moved the seven-foot piece over next to the parking, and then there would still be 12 feet for cars, no problem. And if you give me a can of paint, I'll go out and paint it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll take that under advisement and talk to staff about it. Thanks, Shirley. Anyone else have a matter they want to address with the council that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to move on to the Reports and Recommendations section of the agenda. The first matter there under 7A is a potential resolution 2012-47, which is a resolution expressing opposition to the proposed marriage amendment in front of the general population this fall. It's being advanced by the Human Rights and Relations Commission. I think, is Lisa Schaefer going to introduce the topic?
And Commissioner Kingston is here tonight to speak to that, Your Honor.
Chair Kingston, welcome.
Your name and address, please.
Jessie Kingston, 5801 Brookview Avenue. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for hearing this resolution this evening. As we've discussed in the past, back on June 28 of 2011, the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission endorsed a resolution from the League of Minnesota Human Rights Commission, which publicly opposed changing the Minnesota Constitution to ban the legal recognition of same-sex relations in unions. We're urging the city council to join us in endorsing a similar resolution and publicly oppose the constitutional amendment. It's important for us that we oppose this marriage amendment. As in Edina, we have worked very hard to create an inclusive and open community where people feel that they are treated fairly. We took that first step here in Edina when we passed the Domestic Partnership Ordinance in June of 2010. Since the passage of that ordinance, we've had at least 15 couples register as domestic partners. By not opposing this constitutional amendment, it may be seen as a step backward from what we have tried to create within this city. It fulfills our community commitment to be upstanders and not bystanders. And therefore, we are hoping that the city council joins us in opposing this constitutional amendment to ban the legal recognition of same-sex relations in unions. You all have in front of you an updated version of the resolution based on the feedback that we received at the working session and thereafter. So if there are questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Chair Kingston. Questions for Chair Kingston? Member Brindle?
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I know that we each submitted some suggestions for wording based on other ordinances from other cities and how they had handled things. And what I think is in front of us is organized from top down and reads easily, and it does reflect a nice, I mean, it's perfect for Edina. So it just is, you put your own i's and t's on it for our city, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Member Sprague?
Yes, Member Kingston. So what cities have approved a similar resolution to date?
I know St. Paul has. I know Minneapolis has. I have heard that St. Louis Park may have endorsed something very similar, but I have not seen what they have endorsed.
Duluth?
Duluth as well.
Okay. So suffice it to say that we'll be one of the early adopters of this type of resolution?
As a city, that is correct. Yes.
And as I recall, we were the first suburban community to have a domestic partner registry.
Yes, we were.
Okay. Good. Member Bennett or Member Swenson? Go ahead.
I'll make the motion for second, but I was wondering if...
Jessie would read it out loud before we were able to vote on it, but I will need a second, so.
I will second. I also was, the question that I was going to ask was a follow-up to the question that Member Sprague asked, and that is, we understand, we know that a number of other organizations in the state have adopted similar resolutions, and I was asking if you could identify those as well.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question?
Other organizations that we, we've spoken briefly about the cities that have adopted similar resolutions. I'm a Lutheran, and I know that Elka, the Evangelical Synod, has also adopted a resolution, and I was wondering if you could identify some other bodies that have taken this stand.
I know the, what is it called? The Minnesota Rabbinical Assembly for, in the Jewish faith, has adopted this. A number of synagogues have gotten behind it. I have, I know of some other churches. I don't know the names off the top of my head. Arnie, do you?
Let's see, Luther and Synod.
Okay.
Has adopted that.
Okay.
Thanks. Jessie, would you please read the resolution?
Whereas in 2011, the Minnesota State Legislature voted to include the following question on the election ballot in November 2012. Shall the Minnesota Constitution be amended to provide that only a union of one man and one woman shall be valid or recognized as a marriage in Minnesota? And whereas, the proposed amendment would add a new Section 13 to the Minnesota Constitution stating, only a union of one man and one woman shall be valid or recognized as a marriage in Minnesota. And whereas, constitutions historically have been designed and interpreted to protect minorities from the arbitrary imposition of unjust barriers by the majority. And whereas, the proposed amendment would be contrary to the purpose of our state constitution to protect the rights, privileges, and freedoms of conscious of all citizens by withholding from some individuals and families important legal rights and obligations. And whereas, Edina's commitment to equality for all residents and citizens is shown, in part by its adoption and implementation of the City of Edina Domestic Partnership Ordinance in June 2010. And whereas, a broad coalition of organizations, community and business leaders, faith, labor, progressive, and nonpartisan organizations, communities of color, and current and former elected officials have all joined to defeat this amendment. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Edina City Council joins the broad coalition of individuals and organizations stated above in opposing the proposed constitutional amendment entitled Recognition of Marriage Solely Between One Man and One Woman, and urges Edina and Minnesota citizens to vote no on Tuesday, November 26, 2012.
November 6.
November 6. Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Further comments? We've got a motion and a second.
Just one. When you read the fourth whereas, and this is just a technicality.
Okay.
But you read the word freedoms as being plural. Do you want it singular or plural?
Singular.
Okay. Great.
All right. Good. Hold on. Any other comment? All right.
I do, actually.
Thank you.
I'm grateful that the city's leadership has brought this forward. There are two, there's an economic dimension to this. There's also an ethical dimension for me. On the economic dimension that's often not talked about, there are two, there's a book and a study that I think is relevant here. One, there's a book by Robert Florida a few years back called Creative Class Cities. That may have not been the exact title, but that was a subject matter, and it talks about the cities that are flourishing around the nation have this common characteristic of great tolerance for all backgrounds and lifestyles, and those are the cities that are doing well economically. And the study is, the McKnight Study, the annual study that's called Soul of the Community, and talks about what factors create attachment to one's community. And a tolerance and openness to all lifestyles is one of those characteristics. So I think we're doing ourselves a great favor as a city to send the message out to potential businesses, potential residents, that we foster a climate of tolerance, and we accept you as you are in this city, and we welcome you, in addition to the ethical dimension that you've talked about with the principle of equality for all people.
Further comments? You know, I think with the guidance of the Human Rights and Relations Commission, we've been at the forefront over the last six, eight years on a lot of issues that, as you say, make us upstanders and not bystanders, starting out with the opposition to the genocide in Darfur. And lo and behold, we came to find out that we were only the third city in the United States, I think behind San Francisco and Chicago, to pass a resolution opposing the genocide in Darfur. Next came our domestic partner registry, and now comes this very important resolution as well. We thank you for the work that you do. You keep our city moving in the right direction from a human rights and relations standpoint, so.
Thank you.
Well, let's vote on this resolution, 2012-47, Resolution Expressing Opposition to Propose Marriage Amendment. All those in favor of adopting a resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next matter we have before us this evening is a matter that we heard a couple of weeks ago, and it involves a potential zoning from PCD IV to a PUD at 6996 France Avenue. And Director Teague has this matter. And just as a predicate, I will say that the council had seen in the planning commission as well, in sketch plan review, a building that we were greatly impacted by in a very, very positive way. And then we saw one a couple of weeks ago that didn't reflect what we'd seen in sketch plan review, and it looks like the original plan or something close to it is back in front of us again, and I think we'll find out. The council thinks this building looks a lot better, and we're pleased with the outcome. But go ahead.
... had looked at a couple of weeks ago, and I'll let the applicant go into the detail, but I'll just give a brief overview here of where we're at. Before the council is a resolution that would approve a final zoning to PUD and a final development plan for the site at 6996 France, the intersection of 70th and France. Also before you is an ordinance amendment that would establish a zoning district for this site, a PUD zoning district, our first one in town. So this is a look at the building that was looked at last week, or two weeks ago, by the city council, and this is a look at the sketch plan that was presented last summer. So the idea was to get back closer to that original, that original sketch layout. So this is the plan that's, the revisions that have been submitted by the applicant. As you see, the addition of the windows, the signage has gotten smaller. Also, the ordinance before you regulates that specific sign size that's tied in, so we wouldn't get that larger sign that you had looked at the last time. So just to show you a couple other elevations. Also, just a quick overview of the ordinance that's before you. The ordinance itself addresses the issues that we talked about at the sketch plan review and the preliminary development plan. It also addresses issues in regard to the parking and traffic study. Chuck Rickert is here this evening if you have any follow-up questions on any parts of the parking or traffic study. So to highlight the ordinance, the building that you see before you tonight would be required to be built, and that would be built right into the ordinance. The PCD I uses would be allowed, except that drive-through windows, bakeries, coffee shops, or banks would not be allowed. If the entire building is used as retail space, the mezzanine would not be allowed to be utilized for any retail space. Medical office would be limited to 7,950 square feet. And the signs would be allowed per the PCD I standards, and also would address the sign size at the vitamin shop location here and here. Also, there is a setback established for the monument sign at three feet. Code requires a 20-foot setback, so this would be an exception written, again, right into the ordinance. So with that, I can stand for questions, or we can have Dean DeBolus come up and go into more detail in regard to the building.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Teague at this point in time?
Not yet.
All right. Thank you. Mr. DeBolus, you want to come up and better reintroduce yourself, I think would be best.
Dean DeBolus, 5... Second.
Dean DeBolus, 5009 Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. I'm back. And I'm back with a revised building, which I have to give credit to Hector, the developer and the tenant that was willing to work with council. I give him credit for stepping up to the plate and helping pull this together. I do have another similar, which I wish to give council, which is the colored renderings. If you could, okay, we might pass out the council because they had requested that, so they wanted the direct comparison of that. I appreciate it. Another thing I also did, let me put this one up on the screen here, is, the other thing you did also is I kept playing with the computer rendering to get it to the true colors sample, which is right here. So you have the rendering and the picture, and what we're able to do is work with the tenant and have them open up the corner, and they were able to work that. So we're able to get back to where we had started, and because of that, I was able to rework the stone and get back to original concept. So essentially, it's the building that was originally presented from before. Colors are a little different because that copper just didn't quite work with the stone, so I just adopted out of that. But as far as original qualities, pattern, textures, materials, and those elements, it's really back to where it was. And like I say, I was fortunate to have a copper developer and a copper tenant that was willing to say, Dean, I'll work with you, and we'll get this done. So I stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a predicate, I would say, I would thank Mr. Venus for responding to the council's request that you not let the tendency drive to the design, and we're taking it back basically to the design that you started with, and I think that's the reason you got hired in the first place, is because people know your design capabilities. So it's quite a handsome building again.
Thank you.
And we thank you, and we thank you, Mr. Venus, for that. And then let's move into some questions here. Council may have for Mr. DeBolus anything? Member Brindle?
Well, the, the building is beautiful, and thank you for the, for taking our suggestions.
You're welcome.
Because the initial drawing showed truly this soaring corner, and last time when we met, the corner didn't look so soaring. It's probably the drawing, more than anything, that just made it look different. But, but this is beautiful, and the fact that the windows go up to the roof as they did before.
Correct.
That's a feature that, that's, that's not negotiable. It's just too beautiful, and it's too much of a benefit of that space, whether it's, and I'm looking beyond this particular tenant. Didn't want to, I just didn't want to see that go away. This tenant has, has, has a...
Oval, oval sign.
Kind of an oval, almost a childhood color of blue and yellow logo.
Yes.
And, and of course, my, my tendency is to say, uh-uh, let's, you know, we really want to focus on the beauty of the building. Is it possible that we could have just lettering saying vitamin shop?
I've looked at enough vitamin shops. That, I think, and I'll be truthful, because it does have cutout letters with the oval as a background.
Okay.
And if you look at them, there's one on Excelsior next to the Whole Foods, for example.
Which, truthfully, I did not do, but I appreciate that.
But that is an idea. We scaled it down. I'd like to, you know, they gave a lot in, in terms of ceiling this and that.
I appreciate that.
I'd like to at least have them keep the smaller sign, and sort of keep that intact if possible.
Well, I like what it is so much. I'm certainly willing to do that, but...
No, thank you.
I thought I'd throw that in there.
Okay.
Member Swenson?
Dean, I think we understand where you are with the sign, and what we appreciate is that you understand we think the building is, is a long-lasting addition to the corner. I hope you win an award for it. You should.
Oh, thank you.
And you did a great job, and I thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? I think, you know, we had resolved all the other issues two weeks ago. It was, it was the design of the corner of the building that really had us hung up, and so, again, I thank you, I thank Mr. Venus for his understanding.
Can I make the motion?
And we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay.
The move and seconded that we, we adopt, let me get the right resolution number here.
And you have the stone there, and the color has changed to the...
This was the original stone.
Right.
And, you know, from yesterday, the original, and this rendering actually is closer to the actual colors, and also the computer render, which I lightened up to get it closer to what it was, so.
Okay. So the color of the trim in the picture, the stone that you presented?
Yes. So this right here, this computer rendering right here is color, and then the sample board, which I'll slide in the camera.
Perfect.
Is, is the color. That's going to be the palette of the building, and this rendering, I kept playing with it, actually represents it now pretty well.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to allow the rezoning from PCD IV to PUD at 6996 France Avenue, and then we have the resolution 2012-39 to adopt. Anything else, Director Teague?
Yeah. Mayor, if the, if the council is comfortable with the ordinance, you could waive second reading?
Would your motion, who made the motion?
I did. I'm comfortable with that. I want my second.
Waiving second reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Then you want a roll call?
Anything further? We'll need a roll call. All right. Roll call, please, Ms. Bennerat.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
It's going to be a great addition to our community, and we hope to see you again when it's, when it's constructed for the grand opening, and wish you all the best. Yeah, that's good to get rid of that, all those empty, that empty gas station and all those idle pumps that don't look so good down there. So, good.
And very nice underground. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You'll have a little bit of cleanup work to do, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
All right. Next matter before us is a resolution 2012-48, Accepting Various Donations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this reporting period are to the Edina Art Center and the Edina Park Department. And...
Yeah, Mayor, I will note on that, on that park department donation, those are very special hybrid daylilies that will go behind a row of daylilies also in the boulevard that will anchor the 70th Street corridor, and that will mirror some of the private plantings that are being assessed to adjacent homeowners.
Oh, terrific. And that's Carol Emmerich that's donating those hybrids, so. Thanks to Carol. Anything else? All right. Now, we've got, the next matter is the discussion about our public meeting schedule, kind of interfacing with religious observances policy, and Karen Kurt, you've got this matter, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. We were approached, the Administration Department, by the League of Women Voters a few months ago to look at public meetings and days of religious observances. We put together a proposed policy based on some input that they had given us, met with the Human Rights and Relations Commission, also got some input from them, and then we had a joint work session where we had some input from the council as well. There were several challenges we confronted in terms of looking at this policy, and we've tried to outline that in some of the materials before you.
All right. Questions for Karen Kurt with regard to this matter?
I do, Mayor.
Member Sprague.
So in terms of in general, for our scheduling, what other events do we try to accommodate year to year, you know, political, social, sporting, academic? There are a host of different events that we, that we attempt to accommodate in creating our schedule, correct?
You know, there are a few ones that I'm aware of, things like a party caucus nights, which is required, I believe, by state statute. I don't know, Manager Neil, if you'd have anything to add to that?
Yeah.
National Light Out?
National Light Out is another one.
Election Day.
Listen. Again, thank the Human Rights and Relations Commission for their, their efforts at this. It's, it's a bit more complicated than you might initially think, dealing with all these issues, so.
We did get an email asking us to, to relook at some of the Jewish times of, of observation, and is that incorporated into this in any way?
It is. We had gotten that feedback from the H, the Human Rights and Relations Commission as well. So based on their feedback, and we had some feedback from members of the community, so that what we have outlined before you tonight as an option does reflect that input.
Good. That's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Well, I just have one thing. In the policy itself, in the center, in red, it says, insert list approved by the council. Now, is that the list we're seeing here, or is that a list that is separate from this policy that gets updated periodically?
What we had done is listed some options for you in the report and recommendation.
Okay. All right. I wanted to be sure that this is the list you're talking about?
That was the list that we put together. Certainly, it's, it's, the council's prerogative to make additions or deletions from the information that we outlined.
You know, I guess, I guess the only thing that I would say is that our community is becoming more and more diverse, as an email I sent to you today. And as it becomes more and more diverse, there are observances and there are holidays. And some people observe holidays less, more casually or more formally than, than others. It's really a personal choice, and it's difficult in a policy to say, here are the days when we're going to do this, and here are the days when we're not, because it really is a personal choice in a lot of cases. So I just want to put that out there, that as schedules are built, there are times that we may, we may have requests to move one way or another on, on a particular date with an observance or a holiday that we did not even anticipate. So, so in addition to what we're approving tonight, there, there may be those other things that come up, and, because it's, it's, it's kind of a live list. It, it changes all the time.
Just for clarification purposes, I think based on what you've raised as an issue, Member Brindle, we've got three basic columns on the back side of the salmon-colored sheet. You've got the current holidays that are also days of religious observance, Christmas. Then you've got the, the observances in column A, and then you've got column B. It sounded like Karen Kurt was looking for a little bit of guidance on, are we including everything in those three columns in the calendar, or are we going to do something less than those three columns? That's, that's what you're looking for guidance on.
No, I think, I think that's, that's, that's where we need to start, is with those three columns.
So, the motion and second were probably a bit premature, but let's go into
No, I assumed the three columns, because that's what I thought the motion was based on, so.
It is. That's, I figured it was based on the information that is here, so that's
Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, just so there's clarity on that. Member Bennett?
If, if I may and if I can speak, I agree with Member Brindle that the community's becoming much more diverse, and we, as our population changes, there are people living in our community who observe different holidays, practice different faiths, and I think if my understanding of what it is that the League of Women Voters recommended, and what the Human Rights and Relations Commission has recommended, and what this list has been researched and then distilled to, is what are the most common, most significant days of religious observance for the major faiths in our community? And it's, there are people who do celebrate, for instance, Saints Feast Days, and it is not a common practice to exclude them from scheduling. Similarly, I think that there are some holidays that have been excluded from this list that were originally included on it. And then what remains, I think, is, what I have said to people is, nothing would ever be scheduled on Christmas, nothing would ever be scheduled on Easter, and I think that as we grow and change as, as a community, it's good for us to be respectful in our scheduling, to make sure that no other major days of observance like that are days that, where something is scheduled that becomes impossible for someone to attend, thereby placing a barrier to public participation.
You know, I guess I have a little different perspective on that, because I feel like there are many events that come up in people's lives that can preclude participation. And I, you know, at the work session, I said that I would, I would favor a permissive policy, not a mandatory policy. I think the city should retain the flexibility in its already difficult scheduling environment, trying to accommodate the statutory holidays and other events around town, be it social, religious, political, sporting, academic. And if we go to this policy and then we end up stacking public hearings, then people are waiting longer to, to come up to participate on a given issue. And so there's a counterpoint to trying to encourage more participation. Maybe that will preclude people from, from participating. And I'm, I'm just curious, Manager Neil, when I see Eden Prairie, you know, formal policy, no, does it apply to Board and Commissions, yes, did they ever pass on a provision like this, and what was the outcome?
During my tenure as their city manager, they had the council and the Human Rights and Relations Committee there considered something comparable to what you're looking at tonight, and did not adopt it.
And I see on this survey of practices of neighboring cities, St. Louis Park is the only one that's adopted a formal policy. And I guess, again, I'd like to retain flexibility in our scheduling. I don't, I don't think that there's been any issue with us being intolerant of, of religious observances or antagonistic towards those practices in the past. I think we, again, try to accommodate every possible large-scale event to encourage public participation. So I think the civic, our civic duty to provide efficient government processes comes first in the hierarchy of needs, and we should retain the flexibility. And instead of adopting a mandatory policy, continue to use our best efforts to accommodate these major religious observances, which is the practice we already have adopted right now.
Member Swenson?
You know, we already have something in, in the policy that says special meetings called for emergency purposes would be exempt from this restriction. So you have an out if we need it so that we can continue to do business in a orderly fashion. I don't think we've really added that much to the days of the year that we need to be mindful of, and I'm comfortable doing this. And I guess I would say, as you said on a previous thing, sometimes early adoption is a good place to be, and I'm okay with that on this one.
Your Honor, I did, I thought that Councilmember Bennett did a very nice job of explaining kind of the various elements that went into the consideration of, of what days. The only one I would add to her description is that, that we examined dates that had, in the context of the religious faith itself, significant work-related hurdles, restrictions, thank you. And, and so not, not all religious high holy days have work restrictions associated with them, but this list is a list of, of dates that, that do.
And, I was just going to say, on that point, so, so from a staff perspective, is this, is this viewed as flexible enough to still allow for the orderly affairs of our city government? Or is this going to be a difficult task endeavor to, to achieve each year?
From a staff perspective, Councilmember Sprague and members of council, I think that we can make this work. I think the compromise that we will have to, to be, be more comfortable with is that we may, we may have to have more dates on our calendar that have competing public meetings on them. I don't think that'll happen very often, but, but certainly when you take this number of dates kind of off the calendar, some of them were effectively off the calendar anyway, like Christmas Eve, just effectively was not part of the calendar. But adding, adding more days to that, our, our numbers of public meetings are growing every year, and I think that's something that the council and staff are, are aware of. So decreasing the number of dates that we have to put those growing number of public meetings on only means that we'll have a couple, we'll have, we'll be more apt to have dates when we have two or more meetings on them. I, again, I don't, I don't know how often that will happen, but that's really the only downside to adding more dates.
And is, is staff comfortable that the, the faith, the, most of the faith, the majority of the faith communities in our community is represented here in, in this list? So I see you've got the Hindu, a Hindu, comments?
I think that's one of the challenges. I mean, this was our best effort and reflects the input we had from the Human Rights Commission, but it's very difficult to get demographic data related to religious practice.
I don't personally consider this to be a static sort of situation, where this, this is going to be set in stone. You know, this is, we're going to have to require some flexibility here, because the face of Edina is constantly changing. You know, last week I went to the Taste of Southview, and I, I would bet there were twenty or thirty different ethnic groups represented, from kids in the school and the different food groups, and, and this is our best attempt with, based on the work and recommendation of the Human Rights and Relations Commission, to set a calendar that recognizes events that are important in a lot of different cultures and religions. And I think we should follow the recommendation of the Human Rights and Relations Commission and do it this year and see how it works out.
I guess one last question I would have. As we view our community as changing, would it add, Karen, too much, would it be too cumbersome to draft a schedule and then have it reviewed by Human Rights and Relations so they can kind of look at it and say, yeah, it's something we can live with?
In terms of additional holidays beyond the
No, no, just each year, when we draft a calendar, have them look at it to see if we have scheduled something between two sundowns, or not that I, and I'm not familiar with how some of those, before and two, evening before and two days after Rosh Hashanah, for example. If we schedule something in there unknowingly, they would be able to look at it and say, that's Rosh Hashanah, we wouldn't want a public meeting in that time.
I think what we had intended to do would be to set out a list at the, at the beginning of the year to each Board and Commission, identifying the dates, and then letting them make the appropriate schedule changes.
That's fine, thank you.
But in terms of, if I can add something to your, your question, in terms of, of those meetings that, what we would consider public meetings that are scheduled kind of outside of the Board and Commission realm, that's something that we, we can, once we know the policy, we can, we'll have a master calendar that we'll work around.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Good discussion. Now, we're doing to do something that's a little unusual. In the past, when we've gone into closed session, and there are times when a council is permitted to go into closed session based upon certain legalities, and I think our city attorney could explain for us what those general circumstances are, because we're going to go into a closed session. In, in the past, before he explains that, I'll tell you, sometimes when we've had to do this in, in the middle of a meeting in the past, we've, we've passed a motion to go into closed session, we go into another room. But because we need to record all of this, and we're not set up to record in the mayor's conference room.
And they're both taken, the other two rooms are both being used.
Yeah, and we're going to have to, have to excuse everybody from this room once this motion passes. But let me tell you, let me have the city attorney address why council has the prerogative of doing this in certain very limited circumstances.
Mayor, members of the council, I won't go through all the circumstances, because it's quite a list, but the one we're talking about tonight is, the open meeting law provides you can close a, a meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation, strategy of development of discussion, and review of labor negotiation proposals. And that's what you're going to do tonight, because you have on your, on your agenda, considering approval of a union contract. And before you do that, you want to have a closed meeting to discuss your strategy and your position.
All right. So we are, we are not going to adjourn, we're just going to go into closed session for purposes of discussing this singular issue. Is there a motion to go into closed session to discuss the two thousand twelve thirteen labor contracts for local forty-nine public service worker units and Teamster's local three twenty police officer unit?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. All right, folks, we'll have someone come out and
I'll argue if you decide you want to hang around and come back.
All right. The council has completed its work in closed session, and we are now back live and on tape, and we are going to handle the last matter in front of us in the reports and recommendations section of the agenda. And we have seven E., which is the two thousand twelve thirteen labor contracts for the local forty-nine public service workers units and Teamster's local three twenty police officer unit. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving those contracts say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Next, we are on to correspondence and petitions. Is there anything for the council other than what was on the dais this evening? All right, thank you. And then, Mayor, in council comments, I think we'll start with Member Brindle this week.
Thank you, just one. As Du Town continues, I am wanting to urge us as a council to come up with some recommendations of what we see as, as our vision for Du Town and Edina. I spoke with Manager Neil about a week ago or so about forming a, forming a Du Town Task Force or Working Group of, of Edina citizens, and it would be multifaceted schools, business, city, private residents, to, to really give us recommendations about how Du Town, how, how they see Du Town being part of our community. And I think in order for that committee to, to have some direction, I think we should give it a vision. So I would urge us as a council to take that under advisement.
Good, thank you. Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Member Swenson?
I'm good.
Member Sprague?
Briefly, there's a informational session on the suburban host home program Tuesday, April seventeenth, six o'clock at the South Del Y. And if you remember, there are forty-six percent more homeless youth ages sixteen to twenty-one in Minnesota that were counted just three years ago. There are between seventy-five and one hundred and fifty homeless youth each night in our suburb, suburban area, St. Louis Park, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, and so forth. And this program matches homeless youth with, with households that have a spare bedroom and resources to, to support these youth for six to eighteen months. It's an incredible program. Volunteer from our community, Andrew Knoll, who served on the Edina Education Fund, is, has been instrumental in, in helping this, propel this forward. And again, if you have some time and a spare bedroom and you'd like to get involved in serving suburban youth, Tuesday, April seventeenth, six o'clock at the South Del Y. Thanks.
Thanks. Just a few quick updates for me. We had the Regional Council of Mayors meeting back on the twelfth. We had Bill Melton from our own community there, who was on the State Council of Economic Advisors, former chief economist for American Express, and gave us an update on the economy and, and the slow recovery we're experiencing. He's always good to listen to, takes those complex macroeconomic concepts and reduces them to plain speak for all of us. It's, it's a real talent. Also, we gave a mileage-based user fee presentation, Lee Munich and I from the Humphrey Institute, to the Met Council Transportation Committee that same afternoon on the twelfth. On the thirteenth, at one o'clock, I helped open the new Minnesota batting cages operation down in the Commercial Industrial District. They dished up a couple of fastballs at six District. They dished up a couple of fastballs at 65, and then I said, "Crank it up to 100", and managed to tick one off and walked out of there with my pride somewhat intact. So that was interesting. And then that same evening was that Taste of Southview that I had mentioned earlier, where all these kids, some of them in their cultural dress, were just having a wonderful time, and the food was terrific. So I thank folks for inviting me over to that. Made another mileage-based user fee presentation to the Center for Transportation Studies on the afternoon of the 14th. And then on the 15th, Scott and I attended the MLC Board Meeting. Karen came as well. That was over in Inver Grove Heights. And then the Monday morning, Sherry Engelmann and I met with Dr. Adnan Kareshi from our Community Health Group to talk about doing a stroke study in Edina. You know, there's a lot of work done on cardiac events, but there isn't any real significant stroke study work that's been done. And so we talked about the possibilities of that in conjunction with Duteau. And then Monday afternoon, 15 mayors from the MLC cities met with Governor Dayton and had a real good meeting with him. It seemed to me that this inverse condemnation bill involving the waste haulers, if it gets to him, will get vetoed. And if you remember, what, what that bill says is that if a city decides to change the method by which it collects waste, for example, you go to a single hauler or multiple haulers in regions, those businesses that lost money as a result of that change in policy by the city have to be compensated by the city for their lost business. And that is actually working its way through the legislature. And think about the slippery slope that that poses for a city being able to change its policies and how it deals with certain issues of importance. So felt we had a real productive meeting there. We had the board and commission recognition event last night as well, and that was terrific. A lot of great people have served our town well over the course of their careers, and then we've got some new ones coming online. And then tomorrow, we've got the TAB meeting. Jennifer Janovi from our community and I are sitting on the TAB. We met last night to discuss the, we had a setback at the TAB Funding and Programming and the, excuse me, TAC Funding and Programming, Technical Advisory Committee, and the full TAC with regard to our substitute project, our re-scoping of our project on France Avenue from the Overpass Bridge to the Atgrade Crossings. And so tomorrow is our venue of last appeal. And so what's complicating it is that the chair of the TAB's out of town, and, and a month before this came, this issue came up, he asked me to chair the full TAB meeting. So it's going to be hard to be an advocate and chair the TAB, but I'll do my best. And Jennifer's primed. Scott's coming. Wayne is coming. We'll do the best we can to salvage that, those federal funds and put them in a better project. And Josh was good help in meeting with us last night, too. Had a lot of good ideas. So have your best wishes out there tomorrow afternoon for group success over at the Met Council.
Mayor, I saw on the way in tonight, I don't know, a gaggle of wild turkey walking across the parking lot, and I think that's a good omen. So I'm confident.
All right. All right. Very good. Manager Neil, can you follow that up, that gaggle of wild turkey?
That's a great segue to me, isn't it? Thank you. I was also going to mention the France Avenue Bridge meeting for tomorrow. That's, we're ready to go for that. We're also interviewing Public Works Director candidates this week. We have six folks that we're interviewing right now. And we'll pick a smaller list of finalists from there, but we're getting that number closer to the one. I have a meeting with the school superintendent this week. We're going to just keep in, just to keep in touch, meeting about what our various co-curriculars are, I guess I'll call them, and also planning for the next council and school board joint meeting. We, I believe that we are pretty close to a final settlement with the cable franchise renewal. And we will need the council to take an action on the proposal April 3rd, so the next council meeting. At the next council meeting, I will not be in attendance. I'll be out of town. And so Karen Kurt will be the acting city manager, and will be sitting in this chair and guiding you very deftly out at night, I'm sure.
So we'll have five public hearings then?
We're trying to, we're trying to give her a true city manager experience that night.
Oh, then five.
Yeah. Maybe something with dogs or sidewalks or something.
Give her a little 1:00 AM action.
Coyotes. We'll have a coyote night.
Oh, you've been corrected. It's a flock of turkeys.
Thank you. And finally, we have next week a meeting of the City Managers Communication Advisory Committee, and our subject matter is our special assessment of communications materials. So we've sent that group all the communication materials that we, the letters, the notices, all, all of that stuff, for four different projects. And we're going to lay them all out on a big table that night and get their feedback, not about the policy itself, but about the communications messages.
That is fabulous.
Yep. Yep.
That is fabulous.
On that note, when does our new city website go live this year? What's the general timeframe?
I'm really hoping that that site launches in April. We don't have an exact date yet.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Anything else? Otherwise, we will adjourn the council meeting and reconvene for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority work that we have to do. All right. City Council meeting stands adjourned. We are now convening the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting of March 20, 2012. Roll call, please.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
I mean Chair Hovland.
All right. We have some minutes to approve from February 21. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved in second. We approve the minutes of February 21, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next, we have Resolution 2012-4, Recommendation to Modify the Easement and Parking Ramp Agreement. This will be the Third Amendment involving juries' enterprises. And Director Teague, do you have this matter?
Yes. Thank you, Chair, and members. Before you, I apologize for the, it states resolution is before you. There's actually not a resolution. We didn't do a resolution previously. It's just, it's just recommending, or approving the easement agreement that's in your packet. Essentially, the only change here is we're expanding the width of that ramp that connects the parking ramp to juries from 10 feet to 12 feet 4 inches.
Same action as the council approved at the last meeting.
We're going to get this, we're going to get this width right yet, aren't we?
Well, they are. Thank you, Your Honor. We had it right the first time.
Oh, we did?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right.
I actually remembered the 12 feet, so.
All right. Very good. So is there a motion to adopt the amendment to the easement and parking ramp agreement between juries and the city?
So moved.
Moved in second. Discussion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is one that we handled as, as a council as well, but there's a Resolution, HRA Resolution 2012-5, setting a hearing date of April 17th, 2012, modifying the southeast Edina redevelopment district, establishing Southdale II Tax Increment Financing District, considering approval of the Southdale Limited Partnership Business Subsidy and Proposed Spending Plan for Centennial Lake's TIF Financing District. Is there a motion to set that hearing date for those various matters?
So, second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Approved. And, anything else for the HRA? All right. We stand adjourned.